Two of the Acts of 2023. On March 29, 2023, Governor Maura Healey signed into law an act making appropriations for the fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and for certain other activities and projects. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2025, of the remote meeting provisions. This May 13, 2024 Select Board Meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the Board. I hereby grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record the meeting and to anyone else who wishes to record the meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. My name is Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings. I am the Chair of the Select Board, at least for a few more minutes. And joining me is my colleague, Joe Prevetera. Our colleague, Rob Gotti, is a little bit delayed and will be joining us in just a few moments. Also with us on the screen is Chris Coleman, our Town Administrator, Molly Keane, our Assistant Town Administrator and Human Resources Director, Pat Ahern, Town Counsel, and Tish Healy, Executive Assistant to the Town Administrator. Also with us on the screen is Alex Portillo from Westwood Media Center. Alex, thank you, as always, for being with us today. With that, I will move right into the Chairs' Update. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came out for Town Meeting last week and for exercising your civic duties. Thank you very much. Secondly, I want to remind everyone that the annual Memorial Day Parade is around the corner and will be held on Monday, May 27, starting at 10:00 a.m. The parade begins at Westwood Town Hall and will proceed down High Street to the new Westwood Cemetery, where the annual Memorial Day Ceremony will be held. Town staff and volunteers will be replacing flags and planting flowers on all veterans' graves in the new cemetery and old cemetery during the week before Memorial Day. And if you would like to help with this, either with the flags or planting flowers, please send an email to volunteers@townhall.westwood MA.us. Again, volunteers@townhall.westwood MA.us, and Town Staff will respond to you with more information. With that, I will turn it over to Chris for the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I just want to thank everyone who came out for FS1, Fire Station 1, open house and tour on Saturday morning. We had approximately, we're thinking about 75 people that showed up, well-attended. So again, appreciate the time. Want to thank, especially I want to thank Molly for pulling this together, and also Chief Lund, Assistant Chief McCarthy, and all the Western firefighters who assisted providing the tours and having an opportunity for those who did show to learn a little bit more about the station and also the fire department. It was a great day, great information, and greater interaction. Also, just wanted to let people know that May 19 through May 25 is National Public Works Week. So I'd certainly want to thank all the members of our Public Works Department, Todd and Brendan and Jimmy for leading that department. But again, just to thank all of them for their work and to honor and respect the National Public Works Week on May 19 through the 25th. And that was my updates, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Chris. With that, the Select Board will now be going into executive session to discuss two issues, both pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations for non-union personnel. Discussion of either in public would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body. The Board will be returning to open session at approximately 6:30 p.m., although it could be a few minutes earlier or a few minutes later. So with that, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make the motion that we adjourn to executive session with the understanding that we will be returning to open session at the times that you indicated.
Thank you, and I will second that motion out of necessity. Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Welcome back, everyone. We will return to our agenda with scheduled action, and we are delighted to have our poet laureate, Lynn Vede, with us again this evening to make a recommendation to us for a new youth poet laureate. Welcome, Lynn.
Thank you.
So nice to see you.
Nice to see you all, if on Zoom.
The floor is yours.
Well, good evening, everyone. I would like to let you know that after a lot of digging through poetry samples, calling teachers and counselors, in fact, listening to the soon-to-be, I hope, with your confirmation, new youth poet laureate, perform at a poetry slam on April 25 at the high school and pretty doing pretty amazing work considering that the competition was rough. There were six people and they were all good. So I would like to present Elizabeth Lowney, Westwood High School class of 2026, she's currently a sophomore, to be our next youth poet laureate. She is a very good writer. I've seen her work in the past, and I've seen how much better it's gotten in the last year. I was delighted with her performance at the poetry slam. I thought she was terrific. She's a great speaker and deliverer of her poetry. And of course, her teacher and her counselor that we spoke to had nothing but high praise for her. So the committee was composed of, this year, Elizabeth McGovern, who is the library director, Maria Ryan, who's one of the trustees, and myself. So we have, I think, provided you with some background to Tish to share with you. I hope you had a chance to maybe look at that. But we are just very, very happy, and we think it's going to be a great year. It'll start June 1 for Elizabeth, once she is confirmed or appointed, I guess, and will run through May 31 of 2025. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much, Lynn. We did get a sampling of Elizabeth's poetry, and it was beautiful to read. Well done, Elizabeth. We thank you, Lynn, and the members of the committee for all of your work in making this recommendation to us. And Elizabeth, we want to thank you in advance for making this serious time commitment for your public service to the town, and we wish you continued success in your work as a poet. I want to open this up to my colleagues to see if they might have any questions or comments that they might like to make.
No additional. Go ahead, Joe.
I enjoyed them. It was, Lynn, you tipped me off to this, so I made sure I spent some time on them. So I, well done, very well done. I'm all set, Rob.
I will just echo what you had to say, Joe, and congratulations.
Thank you. I will now gladly accept a motion to appoint Elizabeth Lowney to serve as the Westwood Youth Poet Laureate for a term to begin on June 1, 2024, and to end on June 30, 2025.
I'll, I will make that motion.
The motion has been made and seconded. I'll take the roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Elizabeth, congratulations, and thank you for your public service to the town of Westwood as our new youth poet laureate. Congratulations. Well done.
Mary Ann, could I just say one thing?
Please.
Elizabeth's first town-wide platform will be Westwood Day in September 21st. So if you're at Westwood Day, Elizabeth and I will be on the big stage, and Elizabeth will go first unless she wants to go second, and we will be reading Westwood-based poems.
Wonderful. Thank you. Look forward to that. Congratulations again, Elizabeth.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again, Lynn.
You're certainly welcome. It was a delight.
Great to see you. Have a good evening. All right. We will move along now on our scheduled action. Our next agenda item is with respect to employment contracts, and I will turn this over to our Human Resources Director and Assistant Town Administrator Molly Keane. Welcome, Molly.
Thank you. I hate to follow the youth poet laureate. That's, it's a hard one to follow after.
It is.
There are four employment agreements before you tonight. Three of them are reappointments, and one of them is new. So the three reappointments are Director of Community and Economic Development, Director of Public Works, and Town Council. No significant changes to those agreements. And the newest employment agreement is with our Director of Human Services, Danielle Sutton. That position was created in July of 2022, and looking at that position as it compares to other senior leadership positions that have employment agreements, it was determined that that should have one as well. So those are the four agreements before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might be associated with them.
We have reviewed these and discussed them in executive session. I do not have any further questions, Joe or Rob?
No further questions for me.
None for me.
All right, then I will entertain a motion, please.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I recommend that you do them singularly, like, one at a time, so the votes are clear.
Sure, so we'll have four votes. Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you. I would propose the Select Board vote to sign a new three-year contract with the Community Economic Development Director Nora Lockname, effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027.
Second.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I would also like to propose the Select Board vote to sign a new three-year contract with the Public Works Director Todd Corchen, effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I'd also like to propose the Select Board vote to sign a new three-year contract with Human Services Director Danielle Sutton, effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027.
Second.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
And as with great pleasure, I recommend the Select Board vote to sign a new three-year contract with Town Counsel Patrick Ahern, effective July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027.
Second.
Roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Molly, thank you very much. We are fortunate to have these folks working for the town and for the future as well. With that, moving along on our agenda, we have come to the reorganization of the Select Board. The Select Board tradition is to begin the first meeting after the Town Meeting with the appointment of a member to serve as Chair for the next year. Further, the Board appoints a member to serve as the clerk, who will sit in as Chair if the Chair is unavailable or has to recuse him or herself. Finally, the remaining newly-elected member is given the title of Third Member, and by tradition, the member in the second year serves as Chair, in the third year as clerk, and in the first year as Third Member. With that...
I would like to make a motion that Joe Prevetera become the Chair of the Select Board.
I will second that motion. And I will call the roll. Rob?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, Mr. Prevetera. You are now of the Select Board.
I would also like to make a motion that Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings become the Chair of the Select Board for the coming year.
Uh... Rob?
I think you said clerk.
Did I say Chair or clerk? I meant clerk.
Yes, I think you said clerk.
Okay.
I did, yeah.
I had a moment there. Okay, I must have...
I thought I was off the hook.
As clerk...
I'll, I'm gonna second that right now before anything else happens.
Actually, Joe, you're the Chair.
You're seconded in the meeting now.
You can take the roll.
Oh, okay. We do have a second on that, right? I seconded that.
You do have a second on that.
Okay, roll call, Rob?
Aye.
Sorry, Mary Ann?
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote. Rob, you want me to take a shot at the third one?
If you wouldn't, if you wouldn't, or Mary Ann, cap.
Mary Ann, cap.
I'll be happy to do it. And finally, we would like to congratulate Rob Gotti on his reelection and nominate him for the role of Third Member for the upcoming year.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye. Roll call, Rob?
Aye.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion is unanimous. That brings us to, that brings us to a 30-second timeout. I've spoken to some of you, honored, I feel, I honestly feel, Mary Ann, I've told you this a dozen times, now I know how Mac Jones felt following Tom Brady, because you, you are outstanding. You're a great leader. Words can't describe it. I won't try to describe it. Every Chair tries to put their own mark on things. I've been torn between, I loved when I was on the Comic-Con, the face-to-face meetings, but I've heard from so many people that they like the Zoom because they can, they can still, don't have to worry about the kids and attend the meetings. So I'd like to continue with the Zoom meetings. Full disclosure, I've been forewarned, cautioned about the proposed change that I'm going to implement, but I want to make one small change. I'm going to ask, and with Tish and Chris's great help, that we change our format so that if someone would like to speak at the Select Board Meeting, if they're an attendee, that they raise their hand and type in their name and their address, and Tish, if you can move them from attendee to panelist, then I will call on them to speak. Then when they're done, you can remove them from the panelist. I'm going to respectfully ask that all of the speakers be polite, respectful, and courteous. I will be imposing a two-minute limit per speaker, per topic. If a follow-up question is needed to be asked, I will give you a one-minute period to ask you a question. I'll be doing the timing on that, so wish me luck. Tish and I have not practiced this, and I like to do dry runs, but we'll see how this goes. In all honesty, if this does not go as I expected, I, if it becomes hacked or disrupted or some inappropriate behavior or something, then, then we will go back to the format that Mary Ann used when I came on board. And lastly, I've asked the Police Chief and the Fire Chief to join us once a month for some departmental updates. Chris, Tish, did I miss anything?
Nope.
I believe you covered it all.
Okay, thanks for your help this afternoon on that, Chris. That brings us to our next order of business, which is a public hearing for, let me get my other screen up, to review a request from Tastefully Done Cafe and Catering for a common vitteler's license for new ownership at One University Ave, Westwood. Nora Lockname, our Director of Community and Economic Development, is here, and Nora, I assume you'll be leading the charge on this?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, so thank you very much. I believe we also have a representative from Tastefully Done, if you have any questions. But Tastefully Done is a...
Nora, excuse me, just one second. Pat, do I need to open this hearing? Do I need a motion to open it?
Yep, that, that was my point of order.
Oh.
I hereby move to open the May 13, 2024, public hearing for a new common vitteler license, Tastefully Done Cafe and Catering, One University Avenue.
Second. Roll call. Rob?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
I vote aye as well to open the hearing. It's a unanimous vote, Tish. I'm sorry, Nora.
No problem. All right, well, thank you very much. So Tastefully Done Cafe had operated for many years at One University Ave. There's new ownership, who has purchased the Cafe and catering company, and they will operate it in a very similar manner to the previous operation at that location. The restaurant and catering menu has breakfast items, soup, salads, sandwiches, and it's a dine-in application. There's the same space, it's, I think, 1,200 square feet, has 28 seats, and their hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I did check in with Karen Flynn, and she said everything was in order, the quarry checked out. As far as the Board of Health, they have a complete plan review, and they're ready to issue a food permit as long as the Select Board issues the license here. And both police and fire and building have signed off.
Excellent, thank you. Rob, any questions?
Not for me.
Mary Ann, any questions?
No, I'm content. Thank you.
All right, let me give this a few seconds. Tish, any, anything in the queue there?
Nothing right now.
All right, Mary Ann, oh, have I missed anything? No.
Not that I'm aware of, Joe.
Okay, fingers crossed. Mary Ann, would you...
Just for the record?
Yes.
Let the record show the, the meeting was properly noticed, the public hearing.
So noted. Mary Ann, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I move that the Select Board approve the common vitteler license for Tastefully Done Cafe and Catering under new ownership at One University Ave, Westwood, pending completion of final public safety inspections and issuance of a food permit from the Health Department, also for the electronic signatures of the Board to be affixed to the license.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Rob. Roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, unanimous vote to issue the common vitteler's license. Would anyone care to entertain a motion, make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd be happy to do so. I hereby move that the Select Board close the May 13, 2024, public hearing for a new common vitteler license, Tastefully Done Cafe and Catering, One University Ave.
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Tish, that's unanimous vote on closing the hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nora. Nice job.
Thanks, Nora.
All right, Tish, do we have William here?
Yes, he's joining right now.
Excellent.
If you could turn on his camera. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I apologize, we may be having some technical difficulties here, but I definitely... Oh, maybe that's, but I can hear you, thank you very much, Tish.
Would you like to proceed?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank Town Administrator Chris Coleman and as well as Tish for helping facilitate this invitation. I know communities have wanted to hear from various officials, so again, thank you for your time, and I'll be brief. First of all, as Registered Deeds, you know, I have a great staff. We operate the Norfolk Registry of Deeds down at 649 High Street in Gettem, and it's an arm of government many people may not know about, but to the residents out there that may be watching, the biggest asset most of us have are our homes. So I just urge people, if they want information, for instance, on the homestead, which protects people's homes, you can go to our website at www.norforddeeds.org. I know Mary Ann's a fellow attorney of the Bar Association of Norfolk County, and sometimes attorneys don't always agree, but I would say 9.9 attorneys out of 10 would urge people if they own property, and it's your principal residence, you may want to consider getting a homestead. There's also on that website, www.norforddeeds.org, information for first-time homebuyers. We've partnered up with nonprofit social service agencies if anyone's struggling with foreclosures. More importantly, we welcome people to come down to 649 High Street, but through that website, you can access registry records back to the founding of the registry in 1793. So all the records are available. There's, many people use it for real estate research, but there's also a deed, for instance, from the second President of the United States to the sixth President of the United States here at the registry. Four presidents were born here in Norfolk County. So whether you're doing your research for genealogy or for just looking up real estate records, or maybe checking on a mortgage, feel free to use that internet link at www.norforddeeds.org. But you still can come by the registry, or you, we do have a customer service center. I recognize some people may not be as, you know, want to go on the internet, so we do have a customer service center that people can come by, or they can call 781-461-6101 directly. The last thing, as far as it may be interest to the residents, would be the Consumer Notification Service. We started this service, we were one of the first registries back in 2015, but you see a lot of ads on TV and things now. Our Consumer Notification Service is really an anti-fraud notification service. The FBI says the fastest-growing white-collar crime is property, mortgage fraud, and deed fraud. And what this service does, we don't prevent the fraud, but I've signed up myself, my wife and I, we live in Norfolk, not too far from Westwood. We get a notification. So I get notified any time a document comes recorded at the registry for William O'Donnell. I'm William Patrick O'Donnell. It's a sense, I could get a notification that says William J. O'Donnell. I double-check to make sure it's not me. There might be a time when I get a notice for William O'Donnell, and I look it up, and I realize that's a deed to my house that my spouse or I didn't sign, or that's an equity line that we didn't sign. So again, we haven't prevented the fraud, but in the, in the times we live, at least we can get on what's going on right away and kind of investigate into it. And again, people, you know, you can go online to sign up for this service. My dad climbed poles for the Boston Edison for 38 years. He reminded, you know, when we were talking about what we're doing at work, he said, remember, people don't know or don't care to know a lot about computers. or don't care to know a lot about computers, uh, do that customer service center. So you can call up the customer service center if you get a notification like this, uh, just to, you know, have people walk you through and double-check to just make sure that whatever that document is, it doesn't pertain to your particular uh, property. So again, um, statistically, i- it was sort of a down year in twenty twenty-three for various reasons economically and with the interest rates, but hopefully uh, twenty, into twenty twenty-four, it's been a little better, and hopefully we'll get, get a little better, um, and a little bit more activity down here at the registry. So I'm cognizant of how busy you are. If you have any questions, I s- I certainly can take them, but I really appreciate um, you know, the time that you and your board have uh, have given to this.
Mary Ann, any questions?
No questions, Bill, but thank you very much for that update and uh, for all that you do at the registry.
That, thank you, Mary Ann.
Rob, any questions?
No questions, B. Thank you, Joe.
Bill, uh, this is Joe Privater. I, I do have one question, and I, and I really appreciate your mailings, uh, mailings that we get. But on the paperwork that we received for this, at the bottom, there's a line that says Community Preservation Act with a sum of ninety-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. Can you help me better understand that?
Well, again, some, nineteen out of the twenty-eight communities uh, have uh, the, have adopted the Community Preservation Act. What we've done, and again, some communities haven't, because you know, they've, it's a tax, uh, over the years, um, when this uh, passed, this Community Preservation Act uh, went into effect uh, in, in, in two thousand and one, what we've done is, uh, by law, we have to collect a fee for every document that gets recorded. So um, we've sent, we've sent out, it will be coming out shortly, uh, that figure was uh, last year's um, the year before. We will be sending out twenty twenty-three's uh, information to the various uh, towns. What we do, Joe, is we've tracked by town, for instance, that in my hometown of Norwood, how many, uh, how much money has got collected, and we don't send it to the towns. We send it to the Department of Revenue, and it depends if a town has adopted the Community Preservation Act. Um, we ju- we just try to show how much money gets raised by documents that get recorded in that particular town. That money goes to the Department of Revenue, and then depending if the community has adopted it, under what percentages, that money gets put back to the town. So uh, that number was probably, uh, that number is a figure of what gets collected uh, on Westwood documents pursuant to the Consumer Preservation Act law. You know, whether, whether you adopt the law or not, uh, by statute, we have to collect that on the documents. I hope I answered it. I, if I haven't, I'll try again.
No, no, that, that was very helpful. And the last thing I wanted to say is um, I was chairman of the Conservation Commission for a number of years. I was seventeen, and my wife is on uh, Housing Authority, and uh, she went to a training session uh, that you put on down at the uh, registry, and I've used the online system. I think it's fantastic. I find it very, very helpful. So kudos to you and your team on that, and thank you so much. Any other questions? Uh, any questions on the outside, Tish? Looks like we're good.
Great. Thank you again, everyone. Have a, have a good evening.
Thanks, you too. Thank you again.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Next, we open in Tom Philbin.
Great.
He's joining right now. Looks like we lost him. We'll join back in.
Can't lose our energies there.
Let's give him a moment. Oh, here he is. He's rejoined in right now, Joe. There he is. Tom, you're muted. Do you want to unmute?
Got that. There we go. Okay, now I think I'm off. All right, good evening, everyone.
Hey, Tom.
Uh, we're at that point uh, where uh, what, most of you know that we have a contract with Constellation Energy, and it gives us a very favorable rate. Current contract runs through uh, approximately December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So that contract is for about ten cents versus the market rate of, in excess of sixteen, which is the current rate uh, somebody else would be paying, or if we didn't have this contract, what the town would be paying, so it's significant savings. Uh, the price of electric very closely tracks the price of natural gas. And uh, for reasons that the last winter was very mild, and because the drilling has been quite high, there is a, a lot of gas in storage, and the price of gas has taken an artificially low plunge, and has created a, an opportunity to renew electric contracts starting in uh, twenty twenty-seven, all the way through twenty thirty-two, at a very favorable rate. So I was uh, trying to get, I get a contract bid from Constellation for the new period, and then when we get that bid, uh, we have to sign it within two days. So what we're requesting of the board tonight is for Chris Coleman, that if we get a good bid, that he have the authority to sign the contract uh, to extend it out. It should be between twelve and thirteen cents for the period, uh, twenty-seven through thirty-two, which uh, my guess is, is going to be very, very favorable, just given the way rates are going.
Thank you, Tom. That was uh, succinct and uh, excellent, excellent presentation. Thank you. It's good to see you again. Um, Mary Ann, Rob, do you folks have any questions?
Yeah, I, I have a couple. Uh, so, Tom, you know, first of all, we know what a great job you did with the last contract and how that worked in our favor, and so I can absolutely understand the need for this request to be able to be responsive, to be able to lock in the, the lower rates. Um, any, any concern that we might miss any further dip?
Uh, you know, I mean, uh, am I a hundred percent sure? No, I'm a hu- not a hundred percent sure that I'm going to wake up in the morning. Uh, I would say it's, it's a good seventy-five percent certain that I don't think we're going to see lower rates, especially when you look at the fact that we're signing a contract for a rate that's uh, four or so cents less than the going rate at the present moment. So I don't think you're going to see anything come down lower than what we would be getting.
Yep, I'm certainly in favor of giving us the flexibility to be able to respond to that, uh, a market condition like that.
Yeah, because uh, we have roughly two days, and uh, when, when we get the bid, and if we don't take it in two days, we, we lose the opportunity. It's approximately a, a five thousand dollars per penny per year. So it's not insignificant amounts of monies of, uh, for us to do it.
I, I had a similar question, and I appreciate that explanation, Tom. Um, and uh, I, I think, uh, especially given uh, your expertise in the field, um, I, I think this is a smart move, and thank you for bringing it to us.
Yeah, I got a lot of help now. Actually, we have another member of WAC, uh, John Eisberg. Also, John is formerly the Executive VP at National Grid, so he's tuned into all this too, so I discuss a lot of this with him, and he gives me another ear and another person who is very knowledgeable. Also, the people at Good Energy give us all kinds of input uh, about where prices are going, because they're uh, going to be looking for us uh, next week to commit for the community aggregation program as well. So they talk a lot about how gas prices are moving, and they're convinced that we're not going to see anything lower than we're seeing it now.
Thank you to John as well.
Chris, so Pat, do you have any other questions?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything in the queue there, Tish?
No, there's currently no questions. No one's raised their hand.
Uh, Mary, would you?
Oh, no, hold on.
Okay.
Joe, you want me to read the question, or do you?
Uh, I'd like to invite them in to be a panelist.
It's not a question about the current agenda item.
I don't believe we can entertain that at this time. Am I correct, Pat?
Well, you can wait for the public impress at the end.
Okay. Can we do that, Tish? Okay. Hopefully a person heard. Thank you, Pat. Um, I think we're ready for a motion. Mary Ann?
I am happy to make one. I move that the Select Board authorize Christopher Coleman, Town Administrator, to sign an extension of the Constellation Energy Contract as needed, contingent upon review by Town Council.
Okay, roll call.
Second.
Thank you, Rob. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That's a unanimous vote, Tish. Thank you so much, Tom, for your hard work on this.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you around tomorrow morning?
Pardon me?
Are you around tomorrow morning?
Uh, early, yes, I'm dressed because uh, we had a, a death friend.
My apologies. I'll try and catch up with you early. If not, I'll catch up with you later in the week.
I'm eight, eight o'clock is a great time, eight, nine, if, if you're around.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, good night.
Good night. I think we're down to appointment of treasurer-collector. Is that sound right?
Sure, um, I can take this one, uh, Mr. Chair. So at the May twenty twenty-three annual town meeting, town meeting voted to change the elected treasurer, elected collector position to an appointed position. Uh, it took some time, but if, on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Governor Moore Healy uh, signed that Home Rule petition, so it went into effect. Uh, after many discussions between myself, Town Administrator Christopher Coleman, and Assistant Town Administrator Finance Director Stephanie McManus, we've determined that the most prudent course of action is to appoint Stephanie McManus as the Town of Westwood's Treasurer Collector. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that topic.
Rob, Mary Ann, any questions?
I have no further questions on this. We discussed it earlier.
Rob, any questions?
None for me, Joe.
Okay. I was, Molly, thank you for hopping in. I was thrown off because I thought it was deja vu all over again, so thank you for saying that. Thanks, Molly. Um, anything in the queue on that, Tish?
No, no questions. No one's raised their hand.
All right, Mary Ann, would you be so kind to make a motion, please?
I would. I move uh, that the Select Board adjust the employment agreement between the Town of Westwood and Assistant Town Administrator and Finance Director Stephanie McManus in recognition of her additional duties as Treasurer Collector for the Town of Westwood.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Rob. Uh, could I have a roll call vote, please? Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That is a unanimous vote in favor. Thank, uh, thanks, Molly. Uh, Select Board Liaison Appointments. Chris, are you going to handle this, or what do you recommend?
Um, I could certainly help you, but uh, this would just be something that would the chair would discuss with the other board members.
Okay, well, then, happy to discuss it with my fellow members.
Okay.
Thank you. Mary, oh, Rob, shoot, this thing's not seeing you. Uh, do you?
That's okay, sorry.
No, no, but um, do you guys have any discussion on the scorecard that we have in front of us? Let me just give it a quick read for the folks at home. Uh, Joe Privater, aid to the elderly and firm. Joe Privater, air traffic noise abatement. Joe Privater, baby liaison to housing partnership for housing. Uh, Joe Privater, off-leash dog park. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Rob Gardi, we've got you down for long-range financial planning. Rob, you're down for school committee. Uh, typically held by the chair, but um, I think we discussed this. Yeah, we discussed.
The school building committee.
School building committee.
Yep, so, and you're good with that, right, Rob?
I am.
Okay, uh, and the Westwood Enviable Action Committee. Were you on that WAC, Rob, at one time?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. You, you still?
Yeah, there were, there were se- there were several meetings where one of the bigger agenda items for them was, was hail, and if you recall, I had refused myself from any of those discussions, so that was why I, I sort of avoided going to some of those their meetings for a period of time.
Got it. Thank you very much. Mary Ann, are you still good with the Canton Street project?
Yes, I am.
God bless you. And Mary Ann, you're down for Commission on Disability Lean Process Board. I think there's one more. Norfolk County Advisory Board?
Yes.
You're good with those. Okay, so the board should, uh, uh, Mary Ann, would you be so kind to make a motion, please?
I would, um, and just as a point of order, Pat, I should read through each of these.
I think Joe just did, so you could make a motion.
So moved.
Those represented.
Uh, I, I.
Hey, is there a second on that?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Rob. Roll call vote, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Our next item is the uh, Select Board Meeting Dates. Chris, I know you and Tish were very gracious to sit down with me and look over these dates. I'm assuming you have with the others. Is, uh, uh, Rob, Mary Ann, have you guys had a chance to look at that calendar yet?
I have.
I did, I had. I had no conflicts with any of the dates that are proposed.
Mr. Chair, can you maybe give a little framework to this? I'm happy to do so.
Take all the help I can get, Chris. Thank you.
So um, is the board, and for those who are listening, um, what the board has done is uh, they schedule out approximately six months worth of meetings. So this period of meetings is um, as of, from May twenty-eighth, proposed from May twenty-eighth through December ninth. Um, obviously, we do have your, the annual town election, which is going to be on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, May fifth, um, and then um, Mr. Chair, in the October-November timeframe, we will do this again through town meeting. Um, work with the board members, um, regarding their respective schedules, and then bring this matter back before the board to vote on the the remaining schedule. But this is through, from May twenty eighth through, proposed from May twenty eighth through December ninth, and I would also, um, if I could, Mr. Chair, just to point out, there's one proposed meeting in there, which would be on a Wednesday, which is not your typical meeting day. Uh, that is uh, July tenth. Wednesday, July.
Yeah, you and Tish explained that to me.
Yes.
Point, good point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I have one conflict on this, uh, but I'm not sure how, I, I'm going to be out of town, I believe, on October twenty-first, but I may be able to call in, so don't, don't move it from me. We can work around it.
Thank you for the heads up on that, Pat. I appreciate it. Um, any, do, Rob, Mary Ann, do you guys have any other discussion on this?
I do not.
I'd like to move on to the uh, next topic, the Off-Leash Dog Park Working Group. Mary Ann, Rob, um, let me just read the background on this. Uh, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Select Board voted to create a working group- Uh, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Select Board voted to create a working group to identify areas in town for dogs to be allowed off-leash or potential areas for a natural or contained dog park. Per the discussion, the working group would be comprised of the following: Select Board Member, Conservation Member, Planning Board Member, School Committee Member, three residents at large, our Community Economic Development Department Representative, our Police Department Representative Ex officio, our Community Economic Development Ex officio, and Department of Public Works Representative Ex officio. Per the discussion on, uh, April sixteenth Select Board Meeting, residents were asked to send an email by May first of the Business Day and state the reason why they would like to be on the working group. We received, uh, nine emails from some outstanding candidates, uh, interested in joining the working group. And those emails are in our packets. I'm not sure if you got a chance to look them over yet. I was very impressed with them, uh, to help us proceed with this. So the first thing I need to discuss, well, let me say this. I'd like to handle this, Mary Ann, the same way that you and Tish handled the, uh, Canton Street Sidewalk, uh, Committee. I, I'd like to, for the Select Board Members to have some time to, uh, speak to the individuals, uh, look the paperwork over, and then submit their, I'm going to say, nominations to Tish. Uh, my question is, how much time do we need? Should we think about, well, should, we should probably do this, do this for upcoming meeting. I'm not sure exactly which one. We've got two coming up, five twenty-eight and six ten. I don't want to rush this, but, and I want to do it right, but I also want to get the ball going on it. So what are your thoughts, Mary Ann?
Um, I, I, I'm not opposed to doing it on the twenty-eighth. I mean, uh, if that works for everyone. But one thought I have, Joe, is whether we might want to submit more than one nomination, maybe three names in case we had some overlap, and that way we'd have, you know, other folks to choose from, maybe do it, you know, weighted, you know, three, two, one, one, two, three, something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think you did that way in the Canton Street, correct?
Believe we did.
Yeah, I think, I thought that worked out well.
Yeah.
Um, Rob, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I, I think, you know, if we do this, by the tenth, I think that works. You know, I don't know if there's any conversations that need to take place. I know when the folks who had put their hands up for, um, the Canton Street Project, I, I spoke at length with each one of them, and there were, I think there were fourteen or fifteen of them. Um, I, I probably would want to do a similar type of thing for this particular group. So, um, I don't know if, if the twenty-eighth is, is viable, but given that, you know, we're going to be going into Memorial Day weekend, and I'm going to be away, uh, next week. So, uh, I think the tenth probably works best.
I'll, I'll second that, Rob.
Yeah, in the face of a new chairman, I'll triple it because and Tish has got to be too, and we, we have to give Tish some time to, uh, to manage this, especially with the new chair. So why don't we shoot for, to, uh, make our calls and our recommendations and get that information to Tish? Um, Mary Ann, what do you think? Like the June fourth, June fifth?
Let's see, well, we should really ask Tish.
I was gonna say by Monday, June third, if that's possible.
I think that, that, that's reasonable, especially given that you want to be able to have what you need for publishing agendas.
Agreed.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Thanks, Tish. Rob, um, all right, so the public is aware, we'll be, uh, making some calls, making some recommendations, and we'll get those to Tish by June third. And then we'll make our announcement. And thanks to all who, uh, tossed their name in the hat. We really appreciate it. That brings us to appointments to, and reappointments to boards and committees.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, there are no recommendations for appointments at this time. Uh, but just want to remind the public that we still have, hey, we're seeking a, a, a member for our Commission on Disabilities. Uh, that term would begin on July first, and we're also seeking members for our historical commission.
And I will follow my predecessors' lead, if they can submit their, uh, applications, um. Let me find the email here to, uh, statement of interest to, uh, www.townhall.westwood MA.us. It's on the portal. Tish, I saw, uh, I like the way it popped up on the, on the opening page here. That's great. Nice work on that. And, or you can mail it to the Select Board, selectboard@townhall.westwood MA.us. Or simply email Select Board Office at five eighty High Street. I don't believe there's any, Chris, there's no further action needed on that, correct?
Correct.
And that brings us to our April first meeting minutes. I looked them over. I didn't have any corrections. Mary Ann, Rob?
I do not.
No, I gave my, um, thumbs up to, to Tish, so I'm all good.
Excellent. Um, Mary Ann, would you be so kind to make a motion to accept the April first minutes?
So moved, as written.
Second.
Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That's a unanimous vote in favor. So I'm looking at the schedule here, and I see Select Board Lia- Liaison Reports. Chris, I think we finished that?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, just as a reminder for the board, uh, this was something new, um, that was discussed, and that's to have this as a standing item on your agenda. Uh, if there's any updates from any of the Select Board Members for any of the, uh, liaisons, liaison work that they have, uh, this would be an opportunity for the board to provide an update to, or board members to provide an update to the board and to those listening.
Thank you for the gentle reminder, Chris. You did tell me that.
Not a problem.
Any, any updates, folks?
I, I'm happy to give a couple of updates.
Sure.
So thank, thank you, uh, thank you. So with respect to the Canton Street Working Group, um, there has been, um, a, uh, smaller, uh, working group, uh, of the larger working group that has been meeting with, uh, hosted meetings, um, publicly open. Uh, and, um, that group has been, uh, looking hard at the plans, uh, and has been looking at the street in sections to determine how impacts might be minimized when thinking, uh, about the plan. And that small group is going to be meeting on May fifteenth at one P M at Carby Street, and we are in the process of scheduling, uh, a meeting of the working group at large, uh, for the end of the month. That also will be posted. Um, the Commission on Disability, uh, has been working hard on recruiting efforts. Uh, you heard that announcement a moment ago, uh, also working on leadership, um, transition planning, and, uh, also looking for opportunities to promote, um, events and issues of interest to the disability community on social media. Uh, and lastly, as to the Norfolk County Advisory Board, I have, uh, I'll be attending a meeting at the Norfolk Aggie on Wednesday night of this week, and we'll be happy to provide a further update at the next meeting. Thank you.
And then, Joe, with regard to the three, um, liaison committees that I, uh, dealing with, uh, long-range financial planning, as you know, um, we had met during the course of last year and talked a lot about, um, the different projects and sort of expense side of the ledger. In, uh, January, our Economic Development Director Nora Lockne came and gave a presentation on the status of new growth, uh, particularly commercial new growth. Um, and as we await the facility study, there really isn't anything of, you know, particular meat that I have, uh, reconvened the group for. We are awaiting that facility study, and that will provide, uh, a great deal of, uh, content for us to debate and discuss for, uh, the upcoming meetings. With respect to the School Building Committee, as you are both well aware, having attended the grand opening of the Pine Hill Elementary School, um, things are going quite well there. The Hanlon School has been, um, demolished, and they're now, uh, removing the foundation. And eventually those fields will be going in, and the fences will be coming down, and sidewalks will be repaired. So, um, work continues on schedule there. So, um, and then, as I said, I have not been in recent attendance of some of the WAC meetings, mostly due to the hail, um, you know, recusal. However, I am reminded by Tom Philbitz's comment that one of the things that they are, um, actively promoting is the, you know, current community aggregation electric, uh, plan. So those are the three from my end.
Thank you, Rob. And I'll just state that, um, I want to give a huge thanks to, uh, uh, I'll, I'll comment on the Housing Partnership end of things, but to our Planning Division, to Nora, Elijah, and Amanda, they work very, very hard. And the Housing Partnership also, Amanda, great, uh, leadership there. Uh, I was so happy how things went in regards to the, uh, MBTA. Uh, those folks put a lot of work into it, and the folks on the Planning Board as well. Uh, it, it's, I was very, very impressed, and that's all I have to say on, on my committees. Air traffic has been surprisingly quiet.
No pun intended.
I think we're finished there. Um, other business that may come up before the board, uh, Tish, this might be where, uh, we have someone in the queue?
We do. We have one question. So would you like to invite this particular resident, Ms. Fusco on Pine Lane, into the meeting?
Please.
Okay, so Ms. Fusco, I will bring you in as a panelist. Could you just state your address when you come into the meeting, please, for the record? She's joining right now. Joe?
Thank you.
Would you like her to read her question? Would you like me to read her question?
Uh, listen, Fran, read it, please.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Fusco, she's on mute.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, Fran, thank you for joining us. What, what?
Oh, thank you for having me.
What can we do for you? Oh.
Uh, I guess, oh, Fran Fusco, twenty Pine Lane.
Thank you, Fran.
Um, yep, uh, my question is, um, tonight's agenda, uh, for the Planning Board Meeting, um, the agenda listed the Fire Station One project under the Town Administrator's report. Should that have said Fire Station One Open House update instead? I had hoped the public would get some information on the project tonight. So I guess I, um, was a little surprised that was just the, um, open house.
Well, we've got the two rock stars here, Fran. Let's, uh, let's see what, what they have to say on that. Thank you for your question, Fran. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Aye.
Chris, was that your, uh, intention just to, uh, speak to the open house? Or Molly, did you have something prepared for the, uh, working group?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that was, um, intended to be an update regarding the open house as well as, uh, to announce the DPW, um, Public Works Week, uh, which begins on May nineteenth.
Okay, so if anything, still hear us, that was, uh, um, could have been presented the better title, I guess, but thank you for your question. I appreciate it.
All right, thank, thank you. All right.
Bye-bye. Um, I think that brings us down to.
There's another, God, there's another potential, uh, person who would like to participate, Joe.
Oh, great. Thanks, Pat. Sorry.
Um, okay, Joe, we do have one more resident, and it's from Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farm Lane. She does note that she, I do not have a microphone slash camera, so cannot be invited in, but she does have a comment.
Uh, would you be so kind to read the comment?
Sure. So Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farm Lane. I am concerned about the deplorable conditions of S F F S one and the well-being of our firefighters. These conditions seem to be potentially, potential liability for the town. Is there anything that can be done to accelerate the F S one project?
All right, thank you, Kathy, for, uh, for, uh, joining us tonight. Thank you for your question. Um, I don't believe so at this time, but certainly something I can sit down with, uh, facilities person and with, uh, Chris Coleman and, uh, the fire chief to see if there's anything else we can do. Uh, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I was surprised, and others were surprised as well, especially when we took our tour, uh, during the open house, but, um, that's a genuine request, and we'll certainly do the best we can to, uh, enhance the conditions. I don't think I can answer you tonight, but I will make a point to sit down with, uh, the fire chief and with Chris and Jimmy this week, if we can arrange a time. Thank you, Kath. Let's give that a minute in case there's another one. Chris, does that sound reasonable to you? In response to Kathy's question?
Sure, sure, we can sit down, um, we can sit down and have that conversation, uh, Joe, uh, Mr. Chair, just to let you know, our facilities director does do a really great job with our facilities and, and maintaining, uh, and enhancing. And there was, uh, quite a bit of work that was done in. I'm not disagreeing with what Ms. Wallace is saying regarding the conditions of the building. Let me just be clear. Um, but Jimmy does do a fabulous job working with the chief and the assistant chief and the firefighters regarding different needs that they have, and he's, uh, he's continuing to do it, but we can certainly have a conversation with him, uh, the chief, Molly, and, uh, the assistant chief.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't catch it, but the guys were saying Jimmy's praise, especially with the plumbing and the break room and how quickly he addressed that. So I agree with you a hundred percent, but it, it's, it doesn't hurt to take another look at it.
Of course not.
Mr. Chairman, there's another comment from Ms. Wallace.
Tish, would you be so kind, since she doesn't have a microphone?
Is there anything that can be done now to, uh, ameliorate the current conditions at Fire Station One? Major extermination, question mark, plumbing drainage improvements, question mark, air purification, question mark, air conditioning, additional storage space?
I did not, Kathy, thank you for that question. I did not have time to, uh, write all of those down, but I will play the tape back, and I'll put them on my agenda when I meet with Chris and with Jimmy. Thank you for your question. Let's give that another minute. Tish, thanks for reading those questions.
Okay, uh, no further questions at this time.
Great, then we're on to, uh, public and press. If there are any other questions or comments, I do have one couple of things to say. I'll, I'll get started. Uh, quick PSA, this Sunday is the, uh, kudos to Nancy James. She run, operates, she and her team operate, run the, uh, PMC Kids Ride, which I did last year. Uh, they meet at Martha Jones School. I had a great time, and that's a great cause, so if people, folks can go out and join them. Uh, hopefully, people have, uh, been made aware of the Dedham Water Westwood District for the voluntary, uh, Stage One Ban. Uh, you can find out more on that, uh, the Dedham Westwood Water District website. Uh, it's a Stage One Outdoor Watering. I just want people to be mindful of that. I will say, uh, I had a first today. I find all kinds of things on my bike rides, and somehow I came across a set of, uh, what I thought were really cool sunglasses. And then, when my wife and I did a little research on them, come to find out, they add sunglasses. They're special sunglasses for people that are colorblind, and these have the indoor lenses. I found these on High Street. So if anybody's listening. and these have the indoor lenses. I found these on High Street, so if anybody's listening and they lost their special glasses, please, uh, give me a shout. If not, I'll turn those into the police section after a few days. And I think that brings us down to our next meeting, which is May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M. via Zoom. And I'm certainly open to any comments that folks are willing to send my way, uh, with the new format. Mary Ann, would you be so gracious?
I would.
Thank you so much.
I move to adjourn this meeting. Mister Chair.
I will, I will second that.
Thanks, Rob. Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you to you all very much, and thank you for your patience. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe. Good night, everyone.
Night.